I think, Chief, if you just use your finger and scroll using your iPad, it'll, 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 you can move them back and forth.
All right, well, it is 6:00, sir.
All right, we're going live.
Got it.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is going to be an interesting meeting. It's the first one that's being boomed and televised, streamed. So why don't we get started with a pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Irene, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, so Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here.
Conflict of interest, are there any conflict of interest to declare?
Item seven, I believe it is for me. No, item, item eight. Do I need to excuse myself for that?
Treadway and Santana, I, I wouldn't think so.
Councilmember Cruz, I don't think that falls within either 500 or 1,000 feet of your residence, if that's...
Oh, no, 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 I was confused with the one at... Sorry. Okay, no conflict.
Anyone else have a conflict?
No.
Okay, how about agenda review, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, staff does not have any changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Next is public comment. However, before we do public comment, I am going to just read a little something that our city clerk has typed up. And it has to do with anyone that's streaming this meeting on YouTube or somebody that might have joined on Voom. I'm not sure if you could do that or not. But basically, if you are watching the live stream where available and you wish to make either a general public comment or to comment on a specific agenda item as it is being heard, please submit your comments, limited to 250 words or less, to the city clerk. And I'm going to read her email address for you. And it's I W E R B Y at C I period Cloverdale, C L O V E R D A L E period C A period U S. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the records, but some comments may not be read due to time limits. So let me just repeat that one more time for those at home, that email address. And next week, I believe we're going to have it streaming on the bottom of the, of the picture that you're getting. But that email address is I W E R B Y at C I dot Cloverdale, C L O V E R D A L E dot C A dot U S. So with that being said, I'm going to open the public comment here at, at the Performing Arts Center. And seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment.
May I ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
It said in the statement that every effort will be made to read your comment, however, some may not due to time. I believe that's intended to be read live, but all of them will be committed to the minutes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And Irene, do you have any public comments in your emails?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next is proclamations and presentations. And we were originally going to just read the titles, but I think especially the one to Cesar Chavez. Councilmember Cruz would, would I'm sure enjoy having us read that one. Then David's going to read one, and then Jason is going to read one. So let me go ahead and read Cesar Chavez's proclamation. And I don't read very well out loud, so bear with me, please. Whereas Cesar Estrada Chavez was born March 31st, 1927, on a small family ranch near Yuma, Arizona. After serving our nation in World War II, Cesar Chavez returned to farm labor in California and began advocating for farm workers' rights. On April 23rd, 1993, Cesar Chavez passed away, leaving behind an enduring legacy of service and leadership. And whereas Cesar Chavez influence, influence has made a lasting impact on farm labor issues and inspired millions of Latinos to achieve education and political success. And whereas Cesar Chavez leadership will be remembered for utilizing the principles of nonviolence and service to community. And whereas Cesar Chavez founded the National Farm Workers Association, which ultimately became the Unified Farm Workers of America, UFW, AFL-CIO, the first successful farm workers' union in the United States history. Under Chavez's tireless leadership, the UFW was the first to win collective bargaining rights for farm workers. And whereas the UFW's collective bargaining agreements significantly improved the quality of life for farm workers throughout the United States. And whereas in 1994, Cesar Chavez was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian honor in the United States. And whereas on Cesar Chavez's birthday, March 31st, individuals and organizations throughout this nation will celebrate his life and work by participating in community service projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the 31st day of March shall annually be known as Cesar Chavez Day of Service and Leading and Learning. In order to reflect on the honor, the life of his distinguished leader, promote the principles of nonviolent and service to community. Thank you. And David, were you going to read the next one?
Thank you, Mayor, and we'll, we'll have that proclamation available at City Hall. And maybe at the next council meeting or some, some following council meeting, we can, we can present it on behalf of the council to Councilmember Cruz for her tireless work with the Latino-Latinx community. I'm happy to have the pleasure...
Before you do that, though, David, are there any comments from anyone in the audience or council members that wanted to say something? Okay. David?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to advise the public that the Cesar Chavez Day of Celebration and Service has been postponed indefinitely given the COVID-19 situation.
Thank you.
It was scheduled to, it was scheduled to happen this Sunday.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members are really pleased to read the next proclamation. City Council Proclamation Recognizing April 2nd, 2020 as Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in the United States of America typically earn 80% of what men earn. And whereas according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than half a million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And whereas nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income in a social security or pension benefit formula. And whereas pay, whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas Tuesday, April 2nd, symbolizes the time in 2020 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Whereas be it proclaimed that Mayor Gus Walter does hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2020 as equal payday in the city of Cloverdale. And this council so reaffirms its commitment to recognize the full value of women's skills and contributions to the Labor Fourth and further encourage businesses to conduct internal pay evaluations to ensure women are being paid fairly. Presented on this day, March 25th, 2020, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Vice Mayor Turner, would you like to read the next one, please?
Sure. City Council Proclamation Recognizing April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Cloverdale. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas young people are at greatest risk of sexual violence and youth aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted. And whereas disabled people, people of color, LGBTQ, people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the city of Cloverdale strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, be it proclaimed that our mayor, Gus Walter, does hereby proclaim April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Cloverdale. And this city council so reaffirms its commitment to address the issues of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. Presented on this day, March 25th, 2020, and signed by Mayor Gus Walter.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Turner. Student liaison report, I don't believe we have a student liaison present this evening. So we're going to skip that and move right on to the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of this council, unless a council member, member of the public wishes to have an item pulled and reviewed separately. Anyone wishing to have an item pulled for discussion? Seeing no one, can I have a recommendation for approval of the consent calendar?
I'll make a move.
Second.
Let us let the record reflect, I believe that was Councilmember Cruz with the first and Councilmember Bagby with the second. Is that, is that an affirmative?
Thank you. Irene, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Cruz.
Why don't we go on to the next one, come back.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
You have to unmute yourself, Martin.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you. And Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Thank you. Communications, any communications to share, staff?
Mayor's staff doesn't have any communications, and I'll defer to the clerk if she has any, any emails that we've received during this proceeding.
No. No communications.
Thank you. Public hearing, there is none. New business, there is none. Subcommittee, just a reminder, we've canceled all subcommittees until further notice. Well, tentatively, I guess, April the 7th. But would you like council members to talk about your bullet points under your specific committees? Or would you rather forego that this evening? Vice, Vice Mayor Turner?
I think these are the same from the previous meeting. I don't see any changes, and we haven't had any meetings since. I'm happy to leave them as is for review.
Councilmember Cruz? Councilmember Bagby?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the instructions?
I was just asking if you wanted to go over your particular subcommittees and talk about the bullet points, or if you'd rather just leave it go for this, this particular meeting.
We could probably let it, let it go for this meeting, but I was wondering if the mayor or the, or perhaps city manager might want to talk about having the subcommittees administered by Zoom with the next tentative date, because there are things on the agenda that are going to need to be addressed.
What was that date again?
The, the current, the next meeting for the Finance Admin and Police is probably the, the meeting that's coming up most quickly, and that is April 7th.
Okay.
Yeah, so I was wondering if this is now the time to address, if we are still on a stay-at-home order that we can hold those meetings on Zoom.
Well, surely, I, I think that's something that we're really going to have to address maybe around the 1st or the 5th of April, just to see where things are.
Yeah, I just, I know that we would need to get the, the agenda out, so I'm just wondering what the timetable would be.
Yeah. So how many days prior would that agenda have to go out, 72 hours? Okay, so that's...
It was on a Tuesday, so it would need to be at least the previous Thursday.
Correct.
And what date would that be?
Thursday?
Yeah.
Tuesday, Tuesday?
Just ballpark.
The 2nd, April 2nd.
2nd, okay. So why don't we go ahead and, and let's say the 1st, we'll start talking about that with the city manager and see where the council is. We'll, we'll have David poll you all separately to see how comfortable you are with either conducting that first subcommittee meeting or postponing that for another couple of weeks. I, I think Councilmember Bagby, it's going to have to be a, just a pulse check as we go along.
Great, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other council members want to talk about their subcommittee meetings? Okay.
Mayor, if I can, just to weigh in on the homelessness community advisory group meeting, that also falls on the, on April 7th. Given the, the date, as well as the, you know, significant size of the committee, we would probably propose canceling that meeting at, at this time to see if we, you know, where we are for, for a potential advisory group meeting in May, because it may be challenging to get that entire group together for a Zoom meeting at, at this time.
Okay. And David, I'm going to ask you here in a second, under manager, city manager report, just to give us a little update on the current situation that we're going through. And specifically with the homeless population. Councilmembers, any council reports other than ones that were submitted by Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz? Okay. Legislative reports? Seeing none. City manager, city attorney reports?
Mayor, council, I'm happy to provide the, the council with, with an update and overview of where we stand today relative to the declaration of local emergency. Of course, the, the council's fully aware that you adopted a resolution that ratified a proclamation that, that I executed declaring a local emergency related to the coronavirus or COVID-19. It, as a result of that, staff is currently working from our continuity of operations plan and focusing staff on essential duties only. It's, it's part of that continuity of operations plan. City Hall is closed at this time. The purpose of the closure is to ensure the safety of city staff working in City Hall, and they're doing so in a manner to ensure physical distancing in accordance with the public health order. And staff is doing everything they can to comply with that order, which included, as of yesterday, a closure of all city parks. It was a result of an updated order issued by the County Public Health Director. Signage was placed at all of our city parks in both English and Spanish, identifying that the parks are closed. That is something we'll, we'll continue, continue to monitor. But that is our way of following the, the public health order as it relates to, to city parks. There are a number of things that staff is, is working on in regards to this local emergency that really is, you know, much greater than just a local emergency. It's obviously a, a, a global issue. It's a, it's, you know, qualifies by the World Health Organization as a pandemic, so it's a, it's really a global issue related to COVID-19. But locally, staff is working on a number of things. Currently, we are working on addressing our local homeless population. We've been coordinating with one of our local service providers, Reach for Home, to coordinate food for our homeless population. They, they've identified that there are 25 local homeless. And what we've been able to arrange thus far is coordination of food through the Redwood Empire Food Bank for delivery at a central location in Healdsburg that will then be subsequently distributed, distributed by Reach for Home volunteers and staff directly to the homeless population. They have to be very careful, obviously, to also comply with the health order in providing that food. The goal is to have the, at this time, have the homeless be, kind of maintain their current location so that they're, they're not engaging with the community, just like we, we are all, you know, trying to avoid. And, but also ensure that they have necessary food resources to, you know, during this emergency. In addition, we are also working on what's referred to as, you know, with the county, alternative care sites. There's kind of multiple purposes there. One is if the, to address, you know, the, the homeless population, if there are infected individuals, to have a place where they can go to be, be taken care of, provided food, get, get care, and also try to reduce potential exposure to, to the public at large. But those alternative care sites are also being arranged for the general public. There's concern that if the coronavirus, COVID-19, does have the significant impacts that are currently projected by our health community, it could overwhelm our local health system. So there's a desire to try and arrange for additional locations where public, citizens and residents could be, you know, taken care of, kind of in a mass care situation. So it's part of just the emergency operation plan to prepare for that, should, should that be necessary. Lastly, but certainly very important, is we are working to address the needs of the food insecure. Want to give Councilmember Cruz kudos in terms of working with the Redwood Empire Food Bank and our local nonprofit organizations to try and arrange for additional food deliveries and coordinating additional food deliveries to, to the community. Both your, your city manager and assistant city manager have been working on trying to put in place a process. It's obviously very involved because it's, it's, you know, one is procuring a fairly large amount of, of food resources and then, you know, packaging it up and then ultimately distributing it to our food secure in our community. I, I want to mention that we are coordinating with our local food pantry. And one of the things I'd like to do with, with our, with, with the council's permission is to work to promote that organization and, and to help raise awareness for food as well as what they really need is, is money to help, to help, and funding to help fund the purchase of additional food, because certainly they, they do get some food that's donated, which is, can be an issue given the current emergency. But, you know, what they really need is funding so they can, they can, you know, buy food en masse and then help distribute it in our community. So if we're able to kind of market promote to our, to our residents and our business community that's a, a local source that they can donate to, I think it would have a lot of value added for our community, especially the food insecure. So that's something, trying to develop that organization so that it, it works for our community. Certainly, there are other food providers that are important. The Cloverdale Unified School District is providing food to anybody who's 18 or younger in our community, and they don't necessarily have to be a, attending the, the school district. That's being provided at Washington School pretty much, you know, most, all days of the week. And we are exploring with the school if there are additional food resources, if they can be, you know, shared with the community, like through the senior center or other. In addition, the senior center is distributing food using the commercial kitchen in the building that's, you know, owned by the city to, to our vulnerable senior population. And I'm trying to think if there's any others. You know, I, I think that's where we want to try to address the food insecure that maybe aren't seniors, maybe aren't children through, through our Cloverdale Food Pantry. So those are, those are kind of, kind of major care and shelter items we're working on. But in addition, there, there is a concern from the county at large, and it's been expressed by the governor through his executive orders about evictions. The county board of supervisors on Tuesday did adopt an ordinance that prohibits evictions for folks, you know, that are impacted by COVID-19. Apparently, they are going to bring that back, because they would like to make some adjustments to their board meeting in April. But that's something that is, is, you know, in independent local government, we have the opportunity, if we desire, to also consider a similar ordinance, either ratifying the county ordinance or considering our own. For example, the, the city of Sonoma wants to include commercial businesses within that, that moratorium. And again, it, it's really directly related to the residents that may be directly affected. I mean, we're all affected, but that might have, you know, actually be affected directly by, by the virus itself to provide some protection to them during this, during this emergency. That's kind of an overview. There's a lot of nuance in the emergency response. We, we just learned yesterday that three police officers with the city of Santa Rosa were diagnosed with coronavirus or COVID-19. Obviously, that, that concerns us when members of our local public safety community in Sonoma County are, are being affected. And our, our police department is, you know, taking appropriate actions to protect the officers here in Cloverdale. So that, that really concludes my report, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Happy to entertain any, any questions you might have.
Thank you, David. Before I open it up to council members, I'm just going to piggyback on that report a little bit. David and I had the opportunity, as he indicated, or I think he did, to talk to Colleen Carmichael today. And she indicated that they were asking the Cloverdale Police Department and the Sheriff's Department to kind of, let me just word it, back off a little... Department to kind of, let me just word it, back off a little bit on the homeless population because they know where they're all at right now, and it's much easier for them to go ahead and deliver the lunches and the food to them, knowing where they're at, rather than having to relocate them again. Also, David mentioned that Colleen said that there were 25, and that was in the Cloverdale area. It was out on Geiser's Road, and it was on both sides of the riverbank. So don't mean, don't interpret that as meaning that there were 25 in the city of Cloverdale. She's continuing to do the best she can to put lunches together and get them to that population. I also had the opportunity on Tuesday to stop by Washington School, and the information that I received from the, from the young lady that was there was on Monday, they served 70 lunches, and on Tuesday, and I think it was up until noon, they had already served 50. I'll be swinging by there again tomorrow, just to kind of see how things are going there, but it's good to know that at least the children are getting fed and not going without. With that being said, Councilmember Turner would like to say something, and then I'm going to open it up to the rest of the council members.
I just have a couple of questions. Have you been made aware, can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Have you been made aware of any labor pools for delivering the meals to either, any of the entities that you described, whether it be elderly or any food insecure? Are any of them looking for drivers or anything that people might be able to sign up for?
Thus far, we haven't organized a specific delivery, you know, or a list of volunteers for, you know, delivery to residents. In my conversations with the Cloverdale Food Pantry, they may, they have a pool of volunteers that help with food distribution. I'd need to check with them whether they're doing deliveries at this point in time, but I think that's an avenue that we need to probably develop a little bit better is identify which households, you know, have a need for food resources and work on how, again, following the county Department of Public Health's distribution guidelines, how we can safely bring that, how food can safely be distributed to those residents that would like a delivery. There are obviously a host of other private services that are available, but recognize that that's not something that is within everybody's means to afford.
Senior Center is offering delivery. I'm getting an echo pad.
We can hear you. The senior center is offering delivery, is that what you said?
Couldn't understand you.
Did you say the senior center is offering delivery?
Yeah, they have a crew of volunteers that will take goods to households. The problem I've been having is that people are calling me, and basically, my husband's been going out to the grocery store and buying goods and then just putting it on doorsteps for some of the seniors, but we're clicking them in now to the senior center. There's no hole really there. If they need more help, they need to call, but there, I think, are a lot enough people out of work that are younger, that aren't quarantined, basically, so that they can do this.
Cool.
A big hole I see because St. Pete's is closed for the next couple of weeks. No bus passes are going out, no rent checks are going out to people, because right there on the spot on Tuesdays, not just for food and then lunches to take away, but they were able to pick up bus passes so they could go meet their parole officers, so they could go down and apply for benefits or whatever in Santa Rosa. Those are not, those don't exist right now, so that's a problem. And I'd say that's probably the big problem, but it was also somebody inside on Tuesdays, like if somebody showed up and said, "We're $300 short on our rent," they got a check right there on the spot, period. They had to show us what was going on, but they got a check and walked out the door. Usually made out to the landlord, of course, not them.
Right.
They also, we also gave help for PG&E for deposits to get into it, but there is no resource right now, right there, where people can just walk up and say, "Here's my problem. I ran out of gas. I'm trying to get there." We bought two wheels for a woman's car who was trying to flee domestic violence. So there's, that hole exists now, but hopefully will be filled in the next two to three weeks.
Okay. Keep us posted. It'd be good to get the feelers out the best we can to people who are available to help that.
Can't understand you.
I said, keep us posted the best you can. It'd be good to get the feelers out for people who might be able to assist with any level of that.
Well, the other way around is I have the crews behind me that can do this. I just need us to decide what it is we want to do. If, I think David is handling it very well as far as the food situation is going. I know there was an opportunity where we could have gotten money for hotel rooms, but we are kind of bypassing that at this point. There's a lot of different oars in the water, but I need direction on how to move on this. And I'm not going to just go ahead and do shit. I'm just going to wait until we have a plan and then implement it.
Well, Mary Ann, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, yeah.
Yeah. You know, I totally get what you're saying, and it is going to be a big, a big hole trying to fill that gap that St. Pete's did every Tuesday. The good thing, if there is any good, is the county is putting out that, and I think we as a city should follow and ratify that action of no foreclosures and no evictions during this crisis.
We have.
I think that's something we have to do as a city, and I also think it has to include our business properties as well. I can't imagine any business in particular asking a tenant to leave over this, especially if they were in good standing up until when the crisis happened. It's a completely different story, somebody that's been behind for the last six months and struggling to keep up. But council members, what else do you think we can do?
Oh, I have one more question if I can.
Besides ratify that resolution that the county's doing with no evictions.
That would be great.
Councilmember Turner?
And then, it may be not at this time is the answer you give right now, but are you getting any specific requests or concerns from your department heads that should get on our radar to consider for future items?
At this time, you know, what senior staff has done is we've, just like we're doing today, we've held a Zoom meeting to discuss, you know, our emergency response and also discuss preparation of the budget. One of the key takeaways from our discussion relative to the budget is, that I wanted to share with council, is because of the nature of this emergency, while we were looking forward to a two-year budget, we think it may be, may put us in a difficult and a challenging position to protect, project future revenues and expenses in year two, especially in light of everything that's going on. So we think it probably is prudent to just proceed with a one-year budget. And we, my direction is that we come forward with really a very flat, and we may even be looking at a negative budget from what we are today, just in terms of ensuring that we're not over forecasting revenues, because I think this is going to have, we think this emergency is going to have long-lasting impacts. So that doesn't mean that we can't come forward later with budget adjustments should, should there be, you know, things, the economy is different than what we predict may happen, but that's kind of the major outcome, and we're going to continue to have biweekly meetings, and as issues come up, we'll certainly bring those forward for council to discuss.
David, would you like to share with us what Supervisor Gore had to say about property taxes and the fact that they were going to still proceed with April the 10th as the due date?
Absolutely. So there's a lot of interest by residents in Sonoma County, but also by, I think, the, some of the Chamber of Commerce's to consider moving back the due date for payment of property taxes from the April due date. According to Supervisor Gore and an analysis that was performed by the Auditor Controller, Eric Roser, said that there's prohibitions in the state law to move the due date back. And then we also heard, especially from our school districts, that they really rely heavily on that, on that revenue for cash flow purposes, and it would put them in, it would particularly cause economic impacts for all of our school districts in Sonoma County if that was moved back. And I think likewise for cities, it's an important cash flow revenue for us. We recognize that, obviously, payment of property taxes is maybe challenging, but it will, it will have a number of impacts if the due dates move back on revenue for a lot of public agencies.
And in addition, the feeling was that most of the property taxes are impounded or escrowed, whatever the term is you'd like to use. So those monies are sitting in bank accounts right now that mortgage companies are holding. And so rather than having them sit with the banks, let's get them over to the county and proceed with the April 10th date. In addition, the county-
Do you have a question?
In addition, the-
I do too.
One second. In addition, the county may be looking or considering a waiver of a penalty that they can control. The due date actually comes out of Sacramento. You had a question?
I do. I think Marta did too. My question is, has there been any discussion on any level about the nonprofit situation? I sit on one board and I also oversee over at the senior center. The Performing Arts Center is two and a half months away right now of closing its doors, and I want everybody to be really realistic about this because we had to refund everything, and although some people said keep ticket price and everything and not refund their tickets, many did, and we did not, even though it's written all over the tickets, no refunds ever. We have refunded everybody when they requested it because I figure they need it. Senior Center's running on reserves right now, so that's nothing real new, but they're having a hard time too. But I think we've got to be really realistic with exactly what's going on. Cloverdale runs on the nonprofits. You all know that. So I would like you all to think about how we're going to deal with this because there is no income for nonprofits, and none of them are going to do, including CPAC, is going to do an ask letter in the next few months because it would not only be unfair, but it would be stupid. So why waste the money? So I'd like you guys to think on that, because I know the History Center's going through the same thing, and I'm just wondering if anybody in state government has thought at all about the nonprofits and how badly it's going to hit the rural towns like us.
Well, if you're referring to AB5-
AB5.
AB5.
No, I'm not. No, AB5, well, yes, I didn't like that either, but what I'm referring to is the fact that because of the coronavirus and the fact that everybody had to cancel all of their events for the next couple of months, there is no money coming in. And as far as CPAC's concerned, plus we had to refund all the money we did take in, and there's running costs. So I just want you guys to be alert to the fact that it's going to cost at least, somehow I have to find $50,000 more to keep the doors open there, and nobody is giving money out right now. So if anybody can figure out something that's helpful, senior center's running on, they're running on their reserves now, so this is not good. So the nonprofits carry a lot of the weight in this town in a lot of different ways, and we're going to have to make a decision. Are we going to fund them? Are we going to let them die? It's going to be up to us.
Well, that would be an easy answer if we still had redevelopment money, but we don't. You know, I don't have an answer for you, Mary Ann. You know, if you shut down, if the doors are closed right now, I would think that your expenditures would also be somewhat cut.
You don't understand the way like a performing arts center works is that you do the whole season. You've already paid the whole season, but we are not getting any money coming back. And plus, we had to refund. You've already paid everybody who's involved, because you have to pay your actors, you have to pay all of the special event people. A performing arts center is slightly different than some nonprofits, and it's going to just be what it's going to be. If the doors are going to close, we're going to have to decide how we want to do it. It's really simple.
Well, I think the Performing Arts Center is not going to be the only one. Like you said, I think the senior center and the History Center, and that's a meeting that we're going to have to have at some point. I don't know that we're going to solve it, of course, tonight or in the immediate-
You know, I was just wanting to put it on the radar of you guys, because they're going to fall, like a lot of the small businesses in this town are going to fall, a lot of the nonprofits are going to fall if this doesn't end within the next two months. But I'm not saying we should kill grandma, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, you know, it's something that we have to be real about, because we've been very real about it at the meetings. We've been very honest with everybody and trying to skimp and save as much as we can, but there's just X amount of dollars. That's all you can do.
Well, thank you for sharing that, and I'm sure all the council members will be thinking of that as well. Marta, did you have something to add?
Well, I have a question. That ordinance that the Board of Supervisors passed, doesn't that just apply to the whole county, you know, stop on evictions?
Oh, the evictions, if that's countywide? Well, you know, I'm not going to attempt to answer that. I know usually the evictions are done by the Sheriff's Department, but maybe Jose could speak to that for a couple of minutes.
That was just passed yesterday.
Mayor and council, if I can, maybe I'll chime in, and then I see Jose, he's ready to comment as well. Marta's correct that the county board did adopt the, an ordinance that was intended to apply countywide, though we did receive notice that they're going to make some amendments and tweaks to it and bring it back for reconsideration by the board in April. There is some legal liability, and Jose can touch on that, but the issue of whether we want to have it be pertaining to us is something we really need to be cautious about because, you know, whether it sets precedent by the county adopting an ordinance and having it apply within our city, where we are then ceding control to the county to enact local land use or other types of regulations that pertain to us without our approval or consideration. So I think with that said, we would want to look at whether we bring forward our own ordinance and have it be considered and adopted by our council, or we at least bring forward a resolution that ratifies the county's ordinance.
David, if I may, David?
Absolutely, Jose.
Just to add, there's, this issue is something that the city attorneys in Sonoma County have been working on together as far as working with the county on their ordinance. We're looking at it right now, we're talking with the rest of the group regarding what the ratification would look like. There are issues regarding whether that ordinance by itself right now, whether it does cover cities. The ordinance itself says it does, but as David mentioned, there is unsettled law regarding that. I think, given the council's direction, or not direction, but comments today, we have been working on it and we will continue to work on it and bring something back to the council, either something to ratify or your own ordinance, which potentially will include the option of commercial. I think I heard some of those comments, that there may be an interest with that, but we are working on that right now very closely with the city attorneys in the region.
I'm very interested, especially because it impacts the mobile homes, all the trailer parks, and we have three trailer parks here in this town, and the situation is very dire for some of the dwellers there. So if they're going to do that, we're going to have to move on that.
And we are moving on that. We actually have quite a bit of progress. The ordinance is pretty much drafted. The ordinance that the county took had a lot of the way in from all the city attorneys. So we are, we do have that already. We hope to have something or a plan by definitely this week, and you'll be seeing that on some kind, on an agenda in the near future. I know mobile home parks are also included.
Yes, I have- Yes, I I I have been reading, you know, thoroughly all that it specifies, and I am very concerned about especially two mobile parks here in this town. So this is very, uh, important for the people who live there.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I, I, we're all concerned when 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 we have to, uh, see a family be moved from their dwelling, um, it it's very unsettling for all of us. Councilmembers, any, anything, anything else? Mary Ann, you started to say something?
No, I just agree with Marta completely. It's the, those, those groups are, especially the trailer parks, are going to be hit really hard because, well, I don't, I don't know how reasonable the owners are going to be, let's put it that way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Mayor, I, I'm just noting, I I see, uh, Councilmember Bagby has her mute turned off, so she may want to chime in.
Yeah, I've had my hand up, so I don't know. Yeah, it's great. But, um, just a couple of things. Um, yeah, in response to, you know, some of the the earlier comments, um, you know, one of the things that I know that the mayor's working on and I've been working on, uh, it with the Sonoma County, um, uh, mayor's and council members legislative group, we're actually going to be meeting, uh, talking once a week instead of just once a month. And, um, I know that the mayor and I have already brought up the issue of some of the services that were being offered at St. Pete's that are obviously no longer available because it's closed. Um, and so I'm wondering if we could kind of just put together a list of those services, just, you know, simple stuff, bus passes, um, domestic violence, rental assistance, food and security, that kind of stuff, so that we can make sure we've got that in front of us when I'm talking to my group and and the mayor is talking to the mayors every week, um, just to make sure we get that in front of our our supervisors. Um, the second thing I've mentioned is that I know we probably, we're, we've gone over time, but, you know, the Mike McGuire Town Hall started at 6:30, so as soon as we're done with this, let's make sure to to jump over to that. And then just finally, as far as, you know, who are we talking to as where the the nonprofits are concerned, I think we're all really concerned about it, but it's bigger than we are. You know, I think what we need to do as a city is just, is remain just hyper-focused on public safety, which is our mission. Um, and the financial, um, crisis that's accompanying, um, this medical crisis is something that we definitely, yeah, I I am definitely talking about this pretty much every single day, either with League of Cities or, um, with other council members, you know, within Sonoma County and within the region. Um, and we are also, you know, we're trying to take this information that, you know, occurred tonight and at previous meetings and push that up because it's going to require, you know, McGuire, our assemblyman, and, uh, Jared Huffman. I mean, that's just realistically, that's where we need to go. So I'm, I'm doing everything I can to lobby those folks, um, because this is bigger than, this is bigger than the city, this is bigger than the county. Uh, we're going to need, we're going to need help from the out, from, from the state and, um, federal levels to get through this. And I guess what we have to do is make sure that we have that information, we have the the right information and push it out to our residents for for help. Um, because, you know, the, the city of Cloverdale does not have the reserves to bail out all of the essential services that are provided for, provided by our nonprofits. We just don't have it, you know, and no city does.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember Bagby, and that's a good suggestion, Mary Ann. I'd like to suggest that, uh, we hook up tomorrow and make a list of services provided by St. Pete's so that we make sure we don't miss anything.
Well, St. Pete's is not closed for good.
Right.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, it's closed for two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. And actually, while we were, while you were talking, I I sent a quick message to Jen Mendoza asking her about, you know, what are we going to, and also that's something, um, regarding free bus passes within Sonoma County. That's something that we have been talking about a lot at SCA and we're trying, as part of the Measure M, um, discussion, and so I'll bring that to that board, but I'm also going to, you know, um, send, I've sent that note to Jen Mendoza saying, what are we doing about, um, free bus passes or just free rides on Sonoma County Transit? Uh, because it might be enough of an emergency that we just need to do that countywide.
I thought they were already.
Well, that's just the local-
Yeah, and so are several other cities. We're already doing the local free bus, but we need that free bus-
Why not the county bus was free now?
Yeah. Um, it's free, what, for students and seniors, but I think it's still, they were still charging for for other riders, so this would be a really good time, um, for them to implement free rides for everybody, you know, and and maybe they're already talking about that. That's why I sent the message to to, uh, Gore's office, but let, we'll track that down and find that out because that's, that's really important.
Yeah.
I need to also tell you, and I need to share with Melanie too, that I am working with a group of Latino leaders in the county, and perhaps some of our concerns I'll pass on to you since you're talking to the League of Cities. Um, we're definitely going to have a virtual, uh, services, community services meeting in the league this coming week.
Yeah.
So I will address it at that point also.
Yeah.
But it's a good idea to have the list. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm working with Sarah, um, with the, um, our division representative with the league to try to put together a, uh, we were actually supposed to meet next week, um, you know, as a, as a division, um, and that, of course, has been canceled. I've already put in to get, put in an email out to her, and we're going to be meeting next week. We're going to try to put together a regional phone call to find out what's going on with all of the cities in the Redwood Division. One of the issues that's come up is, um, USDA payments that are due, and we're, you know, going to need to, um, lobby Congressman Huffman, and in Lake County's case, they'll, um, you know, Congressman Thompson, who used to be our, our congressman, um, but that's what it's, that's what it's going to take. So we'll, you know, we'll go to that phone call, find out what's happening in other cities, see what we have in common, and, you know, lobby where we need to. So there's already, you know, there's already outreach and activity at that, at that level. And also, of course, um, McGuire is going to be on our legislative call on Friday, so if you have any specific issues that you want me to bring up with Senator McGuire, um, send me an email and I will get that in front of him.
Thank you.
Thank you about the-
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmembers, is there anything else that you'd like to share about this topic? Okay, well, then seeing none, I think we're going to go ahead and move forward. It's a little difficult for me because I can't see anyone, um, as far as whether you're raising your hand or anything, so I'm going to rely on Irene or David to let me know if , uh, anybody's waving their hands up and down that they want to say something.
Um, I have one more comment, Gus.
Yes.
Okay, um, so yeah, next, next time, um, let's have a screen in front of you so that you can see when people are using the, um, the lowering hand and raising hands feature in Zoom, and, uh, um, secondly, I would like to remind all the council members that, um, we need to also be pushing out participation in the census, um, on our, uh, social media channels and make sure people are, uh, either mailing back that, uh, census letter or doing it online. And remind you folks to do that because that's going to be especially important going forward to make sure that we get, um, the funding that we're going to need. Uh, it's going to be more important during this recovery.
Can I make a comment about that? Um, I agree with you completely on that, the census thing, but I've talked to a lot of people that said they got no letter in the mail, and I didn't either, and neither did anybody in our whole compound, nothing.
Well, you can do it online.
No, I did it online.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that a lot of people are, you're right, they need to know that they may not get that letter.
Right.
So I've been trying to kind of push it out there a bit myself, but yeah, if you've got any particular talking points, just shoot me an email and I'll get it out there as much as I can.
Okay.
And and staff would be more than willing to push it out on our, uh, city social media sites with the, you know, with the connection to the, the survey location.
Okay, well, just the last thing that I have to offer before I bring it back one more time to everyone, um, our city manager set out a, uh, city council member community roles for the COVID-19 emergency response, and he's got a list of, um, tasks that, um, we should all be looking at to see if we can jump in here and help out with. I know he received some feedback from council members, but if you haven't had a chance to, uh, respond to him, even if it's no, you don't want to do anything, at least get back to him and let him know so we can start divvying this list up.
And Mayor, after this afternoon, I think I've heard from most council members, so-
Oh, good, okay.
I will, uh, send out an updated, uh, worksheet so that, you know, we're all collaborating, identifying kind of our respective, uh, tasks, and I just want to, uh, uh, say thank you to the council for, uh, your patience during this emergency and working collaboratively as best we can, given the constraints that we're under with this, this, uh, you know, this issue that we're confronting, uh, and if you have any issues or concerns, uh, feel welcome to call me anytime, uh, and and email. Uh, we are on daily meetings, uh, you know, multiple times during the day, uh, coordinating our response efforts to this, and, you know, we, uh, certainly, it it's very fluid, uh, seems like things change, uh, hourly, and, uh, we're, we're doing our best with our, with our small staff to keep, keep on top of all the issues, but certainly let us know if there's anything that we, uh, need to change direction on.
Thank you. And, um, just, just a, a, a closing statement, anyone at home that's watching this, uh, streaming it, if you could maybe just shoot us or give us some, um, uh, feedback on, uh, how the presentation went using this, uh, new system of Voom, um, we'd like your feedback on that. And with that being said, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and close the council meeting, and, uh, you all be safe, wash your hands, and, uh, we'll see you soon.
Bye, everybody. Thanks for, I think the meeting went better, um, so I think we'll just get better and better, hopefully, uh, using this technology.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Mary Ann, I'll call you tomorrow.
I'll be here.